Board of the Selectmen for Tuesday, October 21st. We were just in executive session where we met with town council to discuss Mass Bay Community College RFP process and we also met with town council to discuss potential tax influence financing and agreement with Jack's Abbey. An open session tonight, we'll have public participation, will be signed up. Our town manager's report, then we have two public hearings scheduled for 6:30 and two public hearings advertised for 7 o'clock, which we can't start until 7:00. We have an update from the Traffic and Roadway Safety Committee and we have an update, we got a long-range building plan for Mass Community College RFP. We have continued review of the 2014 Fall Special Town Meeting articles, namely Article 13, which would amend the general bylaws for public and executive session minutes. Then we have continuation of the review of revised selectmen policies. One, the flag policy, which is ready for second reading, free cash policy, which is ready for second reading, conflict of interest slash liability training exemptions, which is also ready for second reading, and veterans council policy for its first reading. And then we'll have selectmen reports. Okay, so there's nobody signed up for public participation, why don't we start with town manager's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a rather brief report. I do want to acknowledge that earlier today, we learned from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development that Framingham has been awarded a $1 million grant, which is known as the Mass Works Program. And we split this grant partnership with the developer of Danforth Green Multifamily Housing Development off of River Path Drive. And this is a grant that will help underwrite the reconstruction of River Path Drive, the main entrance way to the new development. The work will include widening the road, sewer improvements, traffic signals, and sidewalks and paving. This is obviously a demonstration of support for the commonwealth for the creation of housing in Massachusetts and in particular, the governor's demonstration of support of multifamily rental housing. And we're very satisfied to hear about that grant late this afternoon, during the course of the afternoon. Of significance in going into tonight's town meeting, I'm very pleased to report that the Standing Committee on Planning and Zoning voted eight in favor, zero opposed, with one exception, to recommend the extensive re-codification of the Framingham zoning bylaw. This is a joint effort between the selectmen and the planning board to make our zoning bylaw more readable, more understandable, and more organized for ordinary citizens and businesses. And I'd love to give the Standing Committee on Planning and Zoning enormous credit for the effort they put into this evaluation over the past couple of months. I'll tell you that there's been a subcommittee of that group that's met weekly since beginning of September, and the committee itself has been dealing with this massive rewrite since early August and early July. So my thanks to Steve Scholl and all the members of the Standing Committee on Planning and Zoning, and I think their favorable recommendation will go a long way towards putting a readable format in place. Now that we can move on, now that we understand that we can move on to the next stage, which is, does it do what we really want it to do and say what we really want it to say? So that will be coming up, I think, more likely, more likely to be coming up tomorrow night as a matter of business at this meeting. Likewise, on the selectmen's article to acquire the snow parcel off Wayside In Road, the Real Property Committee has voted to recommend favorable action on the acquisition of that 12 and 1/2 acre parcel, and we're very pleased to hear that.
And the Finance Committee.
And the Finance Committee. I had discussions with a gentleman named Tom Greeley, who in the past has organized an event each year called Green Up Framingham, which is an annual cleanup day. That was something that kind of lost its steam at some point, but Tom connected with me and is interested in collaborating with the town to try to bring that back. The DPW and the Parks and Rec Department have always been a partner, they've each said they would absolutely want to be a partner in bringing that back, and I'll be working with Tom to explore that.
May I?
Yes.
I might as well since you talked about this. I saw that and I just wanted to comment, I saw you were looking for some corporate involvement, and when Jen Thompson and I were working on the Bose Day.
Correct.
The person in charge of that was very interested in getting involved, so you probably already know this. But anyway, so please contact her because Bose would like to get involved in something on a regular basis.
Yeah, I think that's part of the plan, we haven't had a chance to talk about that, but the idea is to draw in some corporate leadership to help promote it townwide.
That would be great. The other comment is that the last few years where Tom was running it, the Knott's Cut Neighbors Group was very active in working and having my school, so maybe make sure you keep them in mind because they had a nice crew that was doing a lot of things in the Knott's Cut area.
And we're targeting the morning of the first Saturday in May as the Green Up Framingham Day, so we have plenty of time to engage. I'm sure we'll have really similar conversations with the Knott's Cut neighbors, but also friends of Saxondale.
Exactly.
Some of the people who are organizing on the south side, and really make this a townwide, a townwide neighborhood by neighborhood.
Exactly, neighborhood groups could be great resources to pick them.
We have very positive news from the Mass Department of Revenue, which certified the town's free cash this year at $11,761,000, which is very, very good news for our three-year budget goals. More than anything else, it reflects the improving local receipts revenue estimates that we're able to work with. And, you know, we knew the third year of our budget model would be a challenge, I think that this is another tool that helps us feel with some confidence that we can achieve all three years of that goal. And I'm just concerned that whatever we do with that in the third year, you know, should keep sustainability in mind in terms of what happens the year after. Edge of Rotating began on Friday the 17th and will continue until Tuesday or Wednesday of this week. And there were some notes there relative to the nuisance bylaw, but I think you'll be given an update on that tomorrow. And then lastly, the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission has been doing extensive community outreach in neighborhoods around downtown Framingham. We've had some good engagement, and there'll be continuation of those forums in the weeks ahead as we try to get community feedback and understanding of what the emergent plan for downtown Framingham will apply.
Any questions, comments for the manager?
Just a quick comment, I know we have this on the agenda for tomorrow night about Article 11, but had there been some conversations between town council, town manager, and the chair of the government study committee? These issues, ones that could perhaps be worked out in the next day or two, are we looking more at a refer back or, I don't want to put you on the spot, Chris, but...
Attorney St. Andre will be able to update you further, but my understanding is at least a couple of the changes that were recommended by town council have been addressed in a later draft, so I see this more as an issue that can be worked out rather than a refer back.
Yeah, and the House does such a good job running that committee, I don't want to, you know, undercut a learning. If we can work together in the next day or so to make this thing happen.
I think it will happen, I'm optimistic, and one of the issues is that we're late arriving drafts, and that's not blaming anybody, it's just the way these processes work, so some of the issues were addressed in later drafts.
Please, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I probably should mention one other thing, that we did send a letter to the Secretary of Administration of Finance urging them to release the $5 million, which our legislative delegation placed in the environmental bond bill to support either the development or the preservation of the Birch Road wells. So you've got a copy of that letter. There is some interest on the part of the Secretary of Environmental and Affairs and Energy that if we can't develop the well, that they should provide us some financial incentive to preserve it for some period of time.
I don't know if we got that letter or not.
I didn't receive it.
But I wanted to ask you about a letter you did attach.
Oh, yeah.
The letter from DCR addressed to a family on Russell Road regarding encroachment on the reservoirs. Is that something that all neighbors got or just this one neighbor?
This was brought to my attention by the Conservation Administrator, this is one family that's gotten a letter from DCR regarding an encroachment, which I think is described in the letter, and represented to me as one of the more serious encroachments. And I put that in was to let you know that that was DCR that initiated that.
So we have not heard any, had any communication from DCR directly?
No.
Just, okay.
We were CC'd as a courtesy on this, on this communication from DCR to the Stables on the way.
Okay.
My knowledge is the only one that DCR issued.
On the Birch Road situation and the outreach to the environmental secretary, is it not in our interest to wait perhaps until January to work with the next secretary?
Let's talk offline.
I'm just concerned that if we strike a deal, you know, that if we do happen to have a new administration, that we're back...
It's conflicting advice, I mean.
So, I'm just, you know, if...
You have to designate someone that might want to interact with the legislature.
I think, okay.
We'll cross that bridge, I guess.
Okay, next item on the agenda are two public hearings that were advertised for 6:30. The first one is consideration of a lodging house license transfer for Connery's In Realty Trust at 45 Wintrom Street. Anybody here from this?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is this the right address?
4547 Wintrom Street, correct.
Okay. Go ahead. Let's tell who you are and put the cell number.
My name is Jim Keefe, and I'm representing Connery's In Realty Trust, an association that my brothers and I have. We took over Connery's Inn, a room and house that's on 102 Irving Street, we've had it for about 10 years, and just acquired this property last year. And I apologize for the delay in showing up here, but we've had some family issues.
So, okay, you're gonna have to explain this a little more. You want to transfer, you have the existing lodging house license for Connery's on Irving Street.
Correct, and we run that now, we're not gonna transfer it over to 4547 Wintrom Street, we would like to transfer the existing license or the gentleman who had it before us into our name.
License for where?
4547 Wintrom Street.
Okay, so 45 Wintrom Street was a lodging house?
Correct, it always has been.
Okay, so I guess what was confusing me was Connery's on Irving Street.
That makes sense.
Okay, so you wanna, you wanna transfer the existing lodging house license at 45 Wintrom Street from the former license holder to you?
Correct.
Okay.
And I couldn't tell you his name right now.
It's Wayne Thomas.
Wayne Thomas, okay, yes.
A few questions?
Sure.
So I just want to understand, so are you saying that you've been running it for the past year and you have not had a chance to come in?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so this transfer should have occurred a year ago.
Should have occurred, I think, almost, yes.
So I guess the last town manager, I know our license cordon is out there, have there been any issues, police issues or fire, other issues reported over the past year? I see a no, okay, well that's good, that's a good thing. So you run another lodging house, so I'm assuming you know the board of selectmen has a policy on lodging houses?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, and you've seen it, you've read it, and you follow the registrations and the rosters and keeping track?
Every year, right about this time as a matter of fact, yeah. Very familiar with it.
Good.
Any other comments?
I just had a question, I had read through their application, and they have, you know, restrictions on visitors and whatnot, these rooms are all single occupancy?
Correct.
Okay. And I can, just one more question, so prior to taking it over, the year ago, have there been any floor plan changes or you took it over as is?
No, as is, yes.
So this diagram is what has always been?
Yes.
Okay, well...
I'm just trying to understand the handwritten floor plan on the...
Oh, that was me, I could explain it to you if you'd like.
Okay, well, you've got on the first floor, you've got a living room for apartment one.
Correct.
Then you've got room one.
There is one apartment on the first floor and nine single rooms.
So the first floor is just one apartment with, looks like, five rooms?
No, on the first floor, there is one apartment with a couple of rooms, it's a small apartment, and then there are three other single rooms, three individuals that live in.
Apartment one, okay, got it.
I'm not a great architect, but...
Okay, so that's two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, okay.
Correct.
Good. Any other questions, what's the board's wishes?
Make a motion that we approve the transfer of the lodging house license at 45 Wintrom Street Connery In Realty Trust.
Second by Mr. Bauer, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those?
Thank you very much.
You're all set. Sorry for the confusion.
That's okay.
And the next is the consideration of a Vichler's license for Niko's Family Pizzeria at 1645 Concord Street. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is George Candace, I'm an attorney here in Framingham, and I'm here with my client, Mr. John Stenares, who's a lifelong resident of Framingham. And we are here presenting you the applications for a Vichler's license at 1645 Concord Street, which used to be a place called Zita's Pizzeria.
Yeah.
And prior to that, Giorgio's. And we are here for this Vichler's license, and we'd like our application here to be approved. Happy to answer any questions.
So are you buying the building or just renting it?
We're, at this point, the place is being leased. This is Niko's Pizzeria coming in as the new tenant for this pizzeria.
Okay.
It does not own...
The right-hand side, it's being divided into rental space.
Correct.
Was it that way under the old...
Years ago, it used to be. From what I understand, it had at one point been one location, then split into two, then moved back to one large location.
Okay.
Yes.
So the landlord intends to rent the second, the other half...
Correct.
To a different tenant.
Correct.
Okay, just wondering if there's gonna be enough parking there for both tenants, depending on what the tenants are.
Yeah, I mean, we went through this with the building department, it's, parking should be fine.
Okay.
We obviously would, you know, see that, make sure that the person next door is not somebody that would be expecting a heavy volume of traffic going in.
Do you have, do you have that say over your lease, is that in your lease that you have...
They have the say because technically it's a different corporation, but Mr. Stenares is part of that corporation that owns the building as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Lee.
First, I'm thrilled that you're coming there, I was very sad to see Giorgio's change and then the new one that does not make it, so that's great, it's great for the neighborhood. What is your experience in running such a restaurant and how would you make it successful?
I've been in the business for 30 years, over 30 years. I grew up in the family business, we've had pizza places, I have quite a bit of experience, and we're pretty successful with other ventures that we've done, so we intend to be successful with this. We put in investment with the building, obviously, so...
Well, Marielle, this is not a transfer, this is a new application, okay.
I noticed that you didn't put in for a liquor license, I know that Zita had that, so you've decided that that's not gonna be an option at this time?
Exactly. At this time, we're not interested in a beer or wine license or anything.
Well, as Ms. Lee said, I live right in that neighborhood and I frequented Giorgio's and Zita's and was very disappointed that Zita's left, but we're glad to have you in the neighborhood and can assure you that the construction at that end of town, Eric's here, is nearing a conclusion.
Is...
Is nearing a conclusion.
Well, we've got Central Street.
Oh, Central Street, I'm sorry.
But also a lot of people buy you.
But we hope that you will succeed there, because Zita's was a good neighbor and Giorgio's was good for the neighborhood, and good luck.
Okay, so what are the board's wishes?
I'm in motion to approve the new vichler's license for Niko's property.
Okay, moving forward, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
When do you think you'll be opening?
Hoping to be open before Thanksgiving.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, still, it's too early to start the 7 o'clock hearing, so why don't we go to item four on the agenda, the Traffic and Roadway Safety Committee report. Adam?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Adam Keel, I'm the Traffic and Transportation Engineer in the Engineering Department, and I'm here on behalf of the Traffic and Roadway Safety Committee. Back in September, there was a request that came in of adding Nicholas Road to the snow emergency parking restriction arterial roads list. Currently, parking is allowed along the western side of Nicholas Road and is prohibited on the eastern side. Additionally, parking is prohibited on both sides of the roadway in front of the Branch Library. During the winter months, Nicholas Road has become quite narrow and difficult to maneuver as a result of the accumulating snow, and parked vehicles seem to hinder talking with discussions from the Public Works Department in their snow clearing efforts. The committee discussed this and received a favorable recommendation of adding Nicholas Road to the snow arterial list, and the request is being brought before, before the selectmen.
Okay, questions, comments?
I was gonna make a comment, I enthusiastically support this, as Adam knows, I was at that meeting, the public hearing, and strongly advocated that we do something for Nicholas Road. I live right in that neighborhood, hearing all the time about how narrow that road becomes after successive storms during the wintertime, and I've driven down that road when a school bus, you know, virtually shuts down the entire road and kids are trying to get across the street and into the school bus, and it becomes a very dangerous situation. So I know that the Traffic and Roadway Safety Committee several years ago considered making Nicholas Road a permanent parking restriction, and I think it was reviewed and feedback was provided, and that course of action wasn't taken, but I do feel that a snow emergency parking ban would give the Public Works Department an opportunity to get that road plowed to its maximum. And I really believe that it's the winter and the snow and the inability to plow that road properly that makes for the problem that the neighbors have been talking to me about, and that I see daily going to work in the middle of winter, so I wholeheartedly support this, and I know that there was outreach going to be made to the neighbors.
And just for clarification, the existing parking restrictions will stay in place, except whenever a snow emergency is called for townwide, then it'll become no parking on either side during a storm.
That's correct.
Okay. What's the board's wishes?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Okay, it's a vote. Thank you, Adam.
Just a question for Adam, I'm new to this, and I think I asked this at the other meeting, what mechanism for communicating this to the folks there? Is it just gonna be posting of signs or would it be a mail?
I think there was, ahead of this meeting, I think, through our kind of public relations, I know it was posted on the website.
We had asked for Rob to do that, yeah, okay. Now, would it be signs posted that it's an arterial road, is that how that works?
I think usually all the arterial roads that are part of that snow parking emergency list will be signed, I can check on that though.
All right, great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It is now 7 o'clock, so we can have our remaining two public hearings. First one is consideration of change, which, which one are you for?
I'm from Outback Steakhouse.
Okay, come on up. Consideration change of manager, Outback Steakhouse, 30 Worcester Road. It's an inverted license, it's, well, but there's nobody here from that.
We have to take a vote on the first one.
The inverted license. I'm sorry, you're right, it's the same restaurant.
Yeah.
I didn't read, I didn't read the, okay, sorry. Considerate, so we're in public hearing, to consider change of officer slash director, issuance of stock, transfer of stock, and new stockholder for the Outback Steakhouse, 30 Worcester Road. Okay, and Marielle, do you want to just explain that, the fact that it's an inverted application and what that means?
Exactly, this is an application that has already been approved by the ABCC, and it just comes back here so you can have a formal vote. And what they, what Outback has done is the stock has gone public, so they have to go to the cities and towns to have this approved.
And this applies to all the Outbacks in Massachusetts?
Yes.
Okay.
They all apply to the, they apply to the ABCC in one, as one group, they have to do this process now.
Questions?
So this is, you know, really internal operations of Outback and it's not changing their management or their restaurant, so I would make a motion that we approve the new officer-director issuance of stock, transfer of stock, Outback Steakhouse.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Okay, now we can consider change of manager for the Outback Steakhouse, 30 Worcester Road. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is...
And your name is?
My name is Justin Davis, and I am the manager at Outback Steakhouse, 30 Worcester Road. Please come see us.
You're the... We do a proposed manager, right?
What's that?
The proposed manager?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments?
I recently relocated here from great state of Minnesota, and I have enjoyed my time since I've been here. It's been quite wonderful so far, so...
It must feel like summer.
Yeah, it's...
Better say...
Last week was a little warm, warm, I'm not used to the 75 degrees in, you know, in October, I'm not gonna lie, I wasn't really used to that.
The, we have a letter from the Police Department saying that they have no objection assuming that you receive a town of Framingham server ID card.
Absolutely, I went on, I took in the course, I have to swing over there on Thursday morning just to pick it up, because they only do it from Thursdays from 9 to noon.
Just a quick question, how long have you been the acting manager?
I've been the acting manager for six months.
So you've been there six months as the acting manager, but you don't have a server's ID?
I, that is correct, but I have taken the course, and there are other managers in the building that have the card as well.
Okay, that's not good, you know.
This is happening quite frequently after...
Yeah, but normally, or usually when that happens, a person who's filling in already has a server's card, and that puts not only your company at risk, but it puts the town in a difficult position. If you're the manager on duty, there was an incident there, you don't have a server card, they don't have your name on record, could be kind of messy for you, for the company, and for the town.
I will certainly get that taken care of. I apologize for the delay in it, it's just, you know, like, I did take the course, I just haven't had the opportunity to make it over there to just to pick up the card quite yet. I am, the knowledge when it comes to liquor is, you know, I've been in the industry for excellent years and, you know, I hear what you're saying, I mean, and I do apologize.
It's the official paperwork that we're concerned about.
Can you send the feedback to your corporate that, you know, that this can't happen again? If, you know, at some point you get promoted and move on with the establishment, we don't want to find ourselves with another Outback manager six months later here who hasn't had an ID card.
Yep, I will definitely pass that message along.
Okay, any other questions, comments, what's board's wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Okay, it's a vote.
Well, good luck, welcome to town.
Thank you.
Any tips on the winter you can give us?
You need snow tires.
It's warmer here in the winter than Minnesota, you can rest your shirt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marielle. Okay, next item on the agenda is an update regarding a long-range building plan for Mass Bay Community College RFP. Mr. Halber.
So if we could call up the slides. The point of this presentation is to just provide a little bit of context for a discussion that we've had over the course of the summer, and as a prelude to, I think a pretty significant vote will ask the board to take relative to Memorial Building and several other municipal buildings. You'll recall that in June of this month, we presented the board with a comprehensive long-range municipal building plan covering 19 of our buildings, and resulting in a fairly sizable investment that we need to make after years of perhaps deferring maintenance more than we should have. Is it coming up, or?
Yep.
Here we go. Maybe we can dim the lights to help it a lot. Significant municipal building expenditures, which if you add them up with school buildings, which has a long-range building plan in place, is a significant financial challenge for the town in the years ahead. You'll notice in fiscal year 16 that the total municipal and school building needs total just short of $70 million. The two big drivers in that number are $20 million net investment in a new school, and a $24 million investment that would be required to Memorial Building to completely refit it, purchase an annex, and meet our municipal building needs for the foreseeable future. So that's the backdrop. Recent assessment of Memorial Building determined that the building itself is structurally sound in what the architect called "fair" condition, however, the building systems throughout Memorial Building are rated poor to fair, and that's really the effects of years of deferred maintenance and lack of upkeep. There's substantial damage... There's substantial damage occurring to the outside of the building that needs to be addressed almost immediately, and there's a variety of code compliance deficiency, including the lack of a fire suppression system and we're in noncompliance with, on the verge of noncompliance in terms of architectural access for our disabled community. Memorial Building was built in 1926. It has a gross floor area of 76,000 square feet, which includes Nevin's Hall, but only 49,500 of that is available for program space. That is offices, meeting rooms, restrooms, and other storage space and support services. Our space needs study concluded that we really need 63,000 square feet to meet all of our municipal needs within the current building, and this is a 13,500, 13,500-square-foot shortfall in space. On top of that is, we all are painfully aware that the school administration requires about 22,000 square feet of office space. We're short of parking. We should have 96 spaces to support employees. We only have 76. The Police Department needs 76 spaces. We currently provide 36. In building customers and taxpayers really should have set aside 25 spaces, assuming an hour per visit. That's a minimum pocket requirement of 197, and as I said, that we're well below that. And if the planning board were conducting site assignment, I'm sorry, site plan review on this building, they would probably be requiring 210 spaces. So Memorial Building improvements, if we were to completely redo this building for a long view of municipal offices, would be about $18,600,000. An annex, not including acquisition of a site, would be another $5.5 million in improvements. Those two numbers together total just short, a little over $24,100,000. The annex acquisition could run as much as 1.79 based on an earlier appraisal of a building next door to the existing Memorial Building. Adding a parking deck to provide adequate spaces between the Memorial Building and Police Station could run an additional $3.5 million, and we would still have not dealt with the school department administrative needs. So we need to make an urgent decision regarding whether we can afford to stay in Memorial Building and build an annex. Having to address this building in the first five years of the long-range building plan completely reduces or dramatically reduces our ability to address any other critical or municipal building need during this time. We have a fire station in Saxonville that was built in 1897 that's woefully inadequate for modern-day apparatus and other building needs that are critical in this first five years. It also competes directly with a major school construction project that will likely require a debt exclusion, and which is a net of $25 million in principal. And as we said, we have about 73.5 million in municipal buildings that need to be addressed. The total town and school amount to be addressed is about $190 million. Deferring it is no much, is not much better choice. If we defer it to the second to five-year timeframe, 2020 to 2025, we create other costs for ourselves. There are urgent expenditures that need to be made to the outside of the building and the building envelope. When we undertake those expensive exterior repairs, we will trip a percentage investment in the, in the building itself over the past several years that will trigger code compliance requirements. So we could spend $2.5 million on building, envelope, and exterior stabilization, but then we would have to install a complete fire suppression system, a sprinkler system for $2.2 million, and we would have to install better architectural access provisions, mainly elevators, and that we would be doing those in advance of a complete renovation of the building. It would just not be an efficient or effective way of doing it. Likewise, if we delay Memorial Building to 2020 to 2025, it will compete with two other school projects, not quite as big as the new school that we need to build in 2016, 2017, but nonetheless a $10,000, $10 million net investment in 2020 and $11,300,000 in 2023. So in June, when we did this, we asked the question, can we afford to stay in Memorial Building? And we have had a series of meetings and discussions offline over the summer, several executive sessions with the Board of Selectmen. On two occasions, we convened the relevant committee chairs of town meeting, including the chairs of the Finance Committee, the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, the Chair of the Capital Budget Committee, and the Chair of the Government Study Committee, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Chairman of the School Committee, and we've discussed whether or not we should offer Memorial Building as part of a package to be the home of the new Mass Bay Community College campus in downtown Framingham. We would offer that as a package, which would include the Danforth Building and the Pearl Street Garage. We hired an architect to review the request for proposals, which the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has issued, and we believe that that package would score very, very well in a competitive process. A package proposal including Memorial Building, Danforth Building, and the Pearl Street Garage, we think is a compelling proposal. It's an extremely visible site for a campus, and we believe the proceeds from the sale of this building, Danforth Building, would substantially support the construction or acquisition of town and school administration offices somewhere in the 90,000 to 100,000-square-foot range. So the next steps, inasmuch as the proposal would have to be available, would have to be submitted to the State's Department of Capital Asset Management no later than October 31st. I'm asking the Board of Selectmen tonight for authorization to, in fact, submit a proposal with that package to DCAM by October 31st. To assure people this proposal would be expressly contingent upon, contingent upon the approval of the Framingham Town Meeting, and that we would specify the time period with which we would go to Town Meeting to seek that approval within a specified period of time. Of necessity, we would have to propose how we would relocate municipal offices at that same point in time. The proposal would include a historic preservation easement of the original Memorial Building facade, and it would guarantee the public community access to the memorial to veterans who served our country. That is the, is the hall just inside the main entrance to Memorial Building. And then lastly, following the submission of the proposal in response to DCAM's RFP, the town itself will issue its own request for information and begin the process of identifying prospective sites that could support a 90,000 to 100,000-square-foot site for municipal and school administration office building. So, so with that, I'll conclude my presentation, and again, we're basically asking for the Selectmen's authorization to submit this proposal prior to October 31st to the Department of Capital Asset Management. Thank you.
Can we get the lights put on, please? Thank you, Ms. Manager. Questions? Comments? On the proposal?
Very creative, very bold. You know, my couple, I mean, I think that it's, you know, you've done a remarkable job pulling this together. Main concern that I have is not to, you know, I think that it's very important that the seat of government is downtown with all the work we've been doing, so I think we want to be careful not to send a message that we're, we're looking to leave because my understanding is we're not. So, but so you're looking for our support to apply to DCAM, so.
Yeah. Contingent upon eventual approval by town meeting.
Approval by Town Meeting.
And I assume that the package that we submit to DCAM is going to have a number in it, right?
Yeah, so we reviewed our thinking that there is little reason for the town to start down this road if we didn't think we could pull the fair market value for this building, the Danforth Building, out to substantially cover the cost of building or acquiring a new municipal and school administration complex. So we shared that price, that figure with you earlier, and I think we feel that we need to be aggressive in terms of what we think the building is worth, given its fair market valuation.
Okay.
One obvious question I'm sure that you have in your meetings, the school administration has been a part of this conversation, and they think it's a good idea to move ahead with the joint building.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't, we have a motion in front of us tonight to vote, to authorize you to sign it. I don't want people to think that tonight is the first time we've really looked at this and we're shooting from the hip, so to speak. This has gotten a lot of review internally, plus the committee that you put together, Chairman of all the different boards, plus the previous meetings we've had an executive session discussion.
So this is the subject of free executive session with the board.
Right.
It's been the subject of two, I call it leadership, you know, the financial leadership group, which are those committee chairs, with the addition of the government study committee chair, where we explained the rationale, we got over how well we stand up to the proposal, and we talked about the challenge of staying in the building and trying to make a $28 million investment with the other pressing building. It's going to cover four months of discussion and review.
Good. Sure.
I think that, I commend you, and I will use the same word Ms. Lee used, and that's creativity. The problem and the hurdles we face with this, with this building as it is, and when you made your original presentation on our capital building needs across the board, across the town, that was a pretty sad night in this room.
So.
Watching and going building by building and looking at how deep the needs were, and certainly, I think you, in this case, have found a very creative way, and you're seizing an opportunity to address these needs in this building in a way that would not be burdens to the taxpayer, and I do commend you for that.
So someone want to make the motion as written?
Yeah, make the motion as written.
Maybe, maybe you should just read it. Val, so we get it on the record.
All right. I move in accordance with General Law Chapter 40, Section 3, and the Board of Selectment Policy 1.7, that Town Manager Robert J. Hoppin be authorized to execute the town's response to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance request for proposals dated July 23, 2014. Offering for sale or gift the real estate located at 150 Conkers Street, the Memorial Building, 57 Union Avenue, for parking adjacent to the Memorial Building, 121 Union Avenue, the Danforth Building, and 3 Pearl Street, the Pearl Street Garage. Such sale to be contingent upon fulfillment of various requirements and conditions set forth in the RFP response, approval by Town Meeting, and compliance with all other pertinent laws and regulations.
Good. Thank you. Second of seconds, Ms. Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Any others?
All right. Great. Good job.
Good luck.
Now, I know we talked about this previously to give Town Meeting a heads-up that we voted this, so they, and if we have an opportunity, maybe we can either give them something in writing or, or mention it at Town Meeting tonight.
We will talk to the moderator.
Yes.
Great.
Because I think it'd be nice for us to tell them directly before they read it and patch or, I mean, this.
Okay. We do have these slides, so I will confer with the moderator.
Good. Okay. This item is continuing review of 2014 Fall Special Town Meeting Article, Article 13, dealing with public and executive session minutes, which we tabled from last week's meeting. And I believe, Mr. Patrino, you're going to speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Happy to answer questions, but the sum and substance of this is, as the board is aware, the Rules Committee meets on a yearly basis, regular basis, and discusses either changes or additions or new sections of the bylaws. Mr. Winnett is the Chair of that committee. In any event, the Chair of the Rules Committee will sometimes forward me draft changes to bylaws, and the approach I take in that circumstance is if, I try to be respectful of a branch of town government. If they want to change the bylaws, if that's really the way I look at it, is so long as the changes comply with master general laws, and I may not make, may not personally decide that certain changes need to be made, but I try to be respectful of their process. But the approach I take is if I feel there's something blatantly illegal or ill-advised or something that's missing, is when I'll step in and request the changes be made because I do, I do respect the legislative process, and hopefully that's consistent with what the board desires. So in the case of Article 13, Mr. Winnett did approach me regarding certain proposed changes to the town bylaw governing the handling of minutes, and I looked at the overall changes, and again, while I might not necessarily agree with each of them, I did insist that there be a change added, which resulted in the addition of Section 5.11.5, which talks about the manner in which we're handling executive session minutes, because as the board is aware, following the SMAC litigation, we strengthened our town policies regarding the handling of executive session minutes and made it clear that your board is the holder of the attorney-client privilege. And so I wanted to make sure that was honored because in the prior draft, it was basically written in a way that the committee could decide whether to release executive session minutes, and that may include times when I'm asked to appear before the committees. It's very rare that I have to go into executive session with committees other than the Selectmen. Probably since I've been Town Council, I've probably appeared before the Selectmen somewhere approaching five, you know, 700 to 1,000 times now since I began as Town Council, and there's virtually never been a problem. I can't even think of a case, maybe one instance where there's been a leak out of the executive session for Board of Selectmen, but on the rare occasions I have to go to other boards, I don't think they're as familiar, and they tend to, even though I give all the cautions, I don't think they're as familiar. And so the three or four documented leaks I've had out of executive session have occurred with other boards and committees besides the Board of Selectmen. So I just wanted to make it clear in these minutes that a protocol, that in these changes to the bylaw governing minutes, that the put-down procedure on the handling of executive session minutes needed to be followed. And when I was there, I'm communicating attorney-client privilege information about cases and things like that to the Finance Committee and Ways and Means. Those are the two other committees I mostly go to meet with, and then on occasion, I'll go into other committees. You know, sometimes Barbara will go meet with the ZBA or the planning board, and sometimes Peter Mello will meet with the Conservation Commission. But again, I just wanted this in there so it made clear that if we were seeking to release executive session minutes where either myself or one of the attorneys in my office was communicating information about cases, that not only would the committee vote to release it, but before it could be released, it had to go to the Selectmen to be voted to be released, and that's consistent with the policy. So that's an executive summary of why that was added and kind of my involvement with these changes. And if the board wants to take a different approach in working with these committees, I'm happy to do it, but I do try to be respectful of their role, and sometimes there's lots of changes being requested through the Rules Committee, a lot of changes, so.
Well, in the case of this article, what's being proposed goes above and beyond what the state open meeting law requires, and I guess there's two questions. One, do we find, do you think it's necessary to have the additional requirements? And two, I guess for the board to decide if it's something that we'd want to take a position on, or just leave it up to Town Meeting to decide how to handle this article?
There are other towns that we represent and that I'm aware of that do not have any minutes by law as governing minutes, that it's just handled by the open meeting law. That's a policy judgment, really. In my view, in a perfect world, I probably would leave it as the open meeting law and then maybe supplement those necessary provisions. Like, one of the, one of the aspects the town has had for many years is to require the minutes go to the town clerk within 45 days, who in turn then turns them over to the library so that, you know, members of the public can read them, those who may not have as much technological aptitude can read them at the library. So there are certain local adaptations that really reflect the culture of the town that I could respect, but, you know, I don't always think it's helpful to have this level of minutia, you know, adding on to what the state law is because confusion can be created. But again, I don't want to interfere with what the Rules Committee may wish to do. I just, you know, I, again, when I feel a need to act because of something of great concern, then that's when I acted on the executive session minutes. Whether you want to take a position is really up to the board. You know, I could certainly respect if the board took a position that we'd just rather have the open meeting law govern and not add all this information. That's, that's your decision. I can respect that decision, so.
Okay.
I have a couple of comments, and I really wish that the sponsor was here tonight to talk about it because I know Mr. Winnett was here last week.
Yep.
I mean, I certainly, like, really appreciate everything he does and all his hard work. I'm a little concerned about this. I'm not sure if it's what the right thing for the board to do in terms of taking a position, but I feel that, you know, the open meeting law, the conflict of interest, all of it, it's already, there are so many, you know, aspects of things that the town has to do to comply, and it's really very clear, as Town Council said, what we need to do. I'm not sure we really need to put more layers of things on top of not just us, but our staff and the clerk's office. And I'm not, I mean, I'm not really sure who forces this. Like, what if you don't have, you know, the committees are all following this? Is there, I mean, does the clerk have to follow up on this and make sure that everybody's doing things to the letter of the law, which makes it even more difficult for her to do her job?
That's an excellent question. In fact, we both, the town clerk and myself, were approached by Mr. Winnett, asking him to be the enforcing authority, and I explained that I could not go to Framingham District Court. For boards and committees I represent, I wouldn't want to be put, that would put me in a conflict position where I'd be pursuing enforcement. enforcement action against different boards. And the town clerk, I don't want to speak for her, but there was a funding issue and an, you know, respectful unwillingness to do that, absent additional funding. So I believe, the Rules Committee can speak for itself, but I believe there is drafts in place that may seek to delegate such lovely enforcement power to your Board of Selectmen. I think that's coming up in the...
I think we should take the position on that.
But that's not before you tonight.
That's before, okay.
That's not before us.
Yeah.
That would be a separate issue.
For the spring. I believe that's in the works.
Do you know, is there any situation where someone is requesting executive session minutes and they're not available, or no one's complying with them, or they're not, they're not on record?
There, you know, certain things that we're working on to update our release here with our Board, and then I have not heard of other instances. Actually, the Finance Committee, as you will remember, actually did release executive session minutes, and they went through the protocol with the departing chair last year, Mr. Lampel, and that worked out fine. So I think, to my understanding, people are complying with it. You know, some of these changes, like, for example, taking out the word "public," the minutes shall be a public record, that's for some reason is stricken. That's absolutely true. I mean, the minutes are a public record if you look at five point, ten point ones. I don't know what the reasoning was, for example, to strike that out, and maybe the drafter maybe should be here to explain that. But again, these are the things that I'm tackling with the Rules Committee.
You just, and you just raised an important part, and Ms. Lee, you followed up on that. If there's no provision now for enforcing these changes, and yet it's being considered for future action by Town Meeting, does it make sense to not take action on this part of the article until the rest of it is put together and a somehow a procedure for enforcing it is brought before Town Meeting as part of this?
That could be one position the Board might take, is insofar as there's a lot of changes being proposed here and there's no present enforcement mechanism, we recommend a comprehensive proposal. That could be a position the Board could take. However, then you might, you will get a comprehensive proposal, then you'll have to address it at that time, so...
So what's Board's wishes based on that conversation? How about if we recommend no action until a comprehensive proposal, including just determining who's going to enforce it, can be prepared and presented in a comprehensive manner at a Town Meeting at a future meeting? How's that sound?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
And the other piece here is that the town clerk is specifically listed in several parts of this. I mean, some of this is existing bylaw, and some of this is new, but if there is a funding issue, that ought to be resolved, you know, rather than just another unfunded mandate that we're imposing on ourselves.
Then Town Council, so maybe we need to have not only comprehensive enforcement, but comprehensive funding and cost analysis and funding for the clerk and council's office.
Right, this is very, can be very time-consuming. Maybe what could happen is after the new year, we could, you know, bring the Rules Committee in, and perhaps the clerk and myself could come, and we could have a discussion if the Board wished to do so after the new year.
Or we could just, you know, take a position that we're opposed to it due to the potential, you know, costs and time implications.
I mean, my sense is a refer back would give an opportunity for the Rules Committee to really vet it out and get the town clerk involved and look at the funding rather than just an out and out disapproval.
Yeah, and we also don't know what the costs are, so to send it back without knowing that, or send it back for that reason without knowing what that cost is, I don't think would be, but it does need to be a comprehensive plan. It does, taking, you know, passing something with no enforcement ability and no budget to enforce regardless of what it's going to require resources, doesn't make a lot of sense either.
And I have a sense the town clerk will be getting up and speaking on this.
I mean, I just also feel if this is really how we want to spend our town resources because you really have to weigh and measure everything that you do, and you can get down to little minutia of the bylaws where you're really, you know, wearing out certain steps.
Okay, what's the Board's wishes?
I'll make the motion that we recommend that this be referred back to sponsor.
For the reasons we discussed.
For the reasons we discussed.
Okay, and that is for Article thirteen. Do you have a second?
Charlie, a second.
Okay, second, Ms. Lee. Fellas in favor? Aye. Opposed? It's four to nothing to recommend to Town Meeting that this be referred back. Okay, so it's seven-thirty, ready. Continued review of revised Selectmen policies, flag policy, second reading.
Thank you, Chris. I see which I, who, except this as a second reading?
Second.
Fellas in favor?
Aye.
Quick question, Charlie. I think you had asked at the last meeting that we have copies of this on the table for Town Meeting members?
Yes. Do we have that?
So we don't have it on the Town Meeting for tonight because you hadn't voted the second reading. We put it on for tomorrow night.
Great.
So we had to be on there by seven.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so... But we have them ready to go for tomorrow.
Free cash policy, second reading.
Motion to approve second reading?
Second.
Fellas in favor?
Aye.
A conflict of interest liability training exemption, second reading?
Second.
And all those in favor? Aye. Now, Veterans Council, do we want to rush to discuss that tonight, or can we table that?
I think we can table, and I'll give you the reason why I think that that's important is that, first of all, there's a couple of typos in here that we need to deal with. And the second point is that the Veterans Council has made a request that we heard at the Policy Subcommittee meeting, Charlie, when you and I were there in July, when Laurie and I discussed this in August, and the feeling is, and I think we agreed, that we wanted to get this Board a year under its belt before we expanded the membership, and there was a Veterans Council representative there when we met with them in July, and we didn't get any pushback to that, the sense being that let's see how it works, let's get a year under our belt, let's see what the workings of the committee are, and then have the committee come forward and meet with the Policy Subcommittee to make the case for expanding the membership. I don't, I haven't heard of a lot of tie votes, so having an even number doesn't seem to be a concern.
I've attended, and there haven't been any tie votes.
Okay, so you want to refer it back to the Policy Subcommittee?
I'll refer it back to the Policy Subcommittee.
Okay. Fellas in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you want to do Selectmen reports, or we just want to adjourn so we can get to Town Meeting?
I'd like to make one.
Sure.
Saturday, I attended the flu clinic that was held by the Department of Public Health, and I will say that Roberto Santa Maria and Kitty Mahoney put together a terrific, terrific event that was staffed by the volunteer medical reserve corps, who gave out a record number of flu shots over at the McCarthy School on Saturday, and this is a year when people are, have been hesitant to be getting flu shots, so it gave them a place to go where they didn't, weren't worried about other issues, to just go, and there were lines out the door when they were passed out. So I just wanted to congratulate them for doing such a terrific job for Public Health.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lee?
Yeah, just wanted to mention that tomorrow night at six o'clock, we have an executive session. We've got the background materials today, and then we have a brief open session following that, so...
Okay.
You two, Jerry, a second.
Fellas in favor?
Aye.